This conference will now be recorded.
All right, today is Monday, June 1st, 2020 at 3 o'clock, and I'm going to go ahead and call the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First, we're going to do roll call and a sound check. So, do I have Commissioner Hall?
Yes, you do.
Okay, and how about Commissioner Hunt?
Present.
Okay, so we do have a quorum with all three commissioners. Next, I'm just going to go through our other staff that's here to make sure we can hear from all of you. So we have time to deal with sound issues if we do. So Wayne?
I'm here.
Hey, Kristi Peter?
I'm here.
Sheriff Landers?
I'm here.
Janet Harrison?
I'm here.
Jerry Ervich?
I'm here.
Nicole Fields?
Present.
Rebecca Austin?
I'm here.
And Roy Kenyon?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, great. And now, if you're not talking, if you could go ahead and mute, that would be great. Before we kick off today's meeting, I just wanted to have some time for us to respond to the death of George Floyd. I think I speak for all commissioners when they say that this is absolutely horrific, that we are all deeply saddened by yet another senseless murder of someone of color. And so, in a minute, we're going to take a moment of silence, but first, Sheriff Landers has a statement he would like to read on behalf of Lincoln County Sheriff's Office, and then he'll kind of lead us into a moment of silence after that. So Sheriff Landers?
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, Curtis Landers, Lincoln County Sheriff, and the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, along with the police chief, sent out a joint message. When we received that message, I strongly agreed with it. So we posted it on our Facebook page, and I wanted to read it today and then add a little bit out of that. So I'll just go off what that message is. Oregon's police chiefs and sheriffs are unified in condemning the reprehensible actions and tactics demonstrated in Minneapolis that resulted in the tragic death of George Floyd. As police leaders and on behalf of our local law enforcement officers in Oregon, we wish to reassure communities that we do not condone and will not tolerate this type of conduct. Our police officers and deputies take assault notes, fail the Constitution, and our profession is based on core values of honesty, character, professionalism, respect, and accountability. We recognize the value of human life, and we believe all persons should be treated humanely and with dignity. Public trust and accountability for police agencies and police officers is crucial to a safe, inclusive community. We recognize that even isolated incidents of police misconduct anywhere undermine public trust everywhere. We are dismayed and disgusted with the actions a few tarnish the reputation of our honorable law enforcement profession and undermine the heroic work our police officers perform in service in our communities. We will continue to work hard to strengthen the confidence Oregonians have in our work and value the trust you place in us. And we added a message that we put out there. We would like to thank our citizens for our continued trust and support in the Sheriff's Office. We know this is earned, and we strive to do so each and every day, on every incident and every contact we make with you. We are proud of the service our team provides to our community, safe and serve you in a fair and equitable manner. And maybe just some words that I'd like to add. Again, this is really discussed, I think, is the one thing that comes to mind when I see that, especially as a police officer, that one person can take the actions to tarnish the rest of our community. And again, it's, speaking of the protests going on, we are in full support of the nonviolent protests. In fact, we stand with the cause of that. One thing I will say is, please, the violent protests have got to stop. That really has no meaning to what we're doing. Nonviolent protests, we'll be right there with you, but the violent protests have got to stop. Again, that doesn't help the situation. And I appreciate each and every one of you and our members and the citizens for the support that we do have for the Sheriff's Office. Thank you. I think you're muted, Commissioner.
Yeah, oh, there.
Yep, I was going to go say that now we'll go ahead and take a minute of silence. Thank you. Doing it again. First up on our list is the adoption of the consent calendar. These are items of a routine nature that either staff or commissioners can pull if we need further discussion. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I would move for adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. And now, moving into reports, Lincoln County Public Health COVID-19 update. As usual, we'll have Nicole Fields present that, and then we'll have our incident commander Rebecca Austin fill in after Nicole's report if there's anything else.
Good day. So, I'll give you an update on our statewide numbers first. We have 4,302 confirmed cases of COVID-19. Today, we confirmed five cases in Lincoln County, which brings our total up to 16. We have had, let's see, 1,542 negative tests done in our county as well. A little bit more details about the cases we got today. We have our first outbreak within the county. It's linked to a family gathering, and we have so far four positives from that gathering so far. The other two cases are not linked to that gathering, but just a stark reminder that this is in our community. It's in our businesses, it's in our workplaces, so just making sure that we are taking those precautions still. We know that this is a long-ranging event, but this is not the time to get complacent, and we still need to, it's critically important to wear a mask, wash your hands, keep that six feet of distance, and try not to touch your face. To talk a little bit more about what an outbreak is, it is that we are able to track more than two people with a similar, with the same disease to the same location and same point in time. So we know that in phase one, we were able to open up to gatherings of 25 people or more. And so, this was compliant with that under 25 people. However, just because it's in phase one, you know, doesn't mean that you're safe from contracting the virus, and you still really need to take precautions. There's data coming out now that it is much, you're much more likely to get COVID-19 from someone you know than from someone you don't know. And we tend to overestimate the risk of getting COVID-19 from strangers, but we actually underestimate the risk of getting it from people we know. And so, just really taking those precautions. We know that it's been difficult, and it's been a long time coming, but making those safety plans with your friends and family, and just acknowledging that things look different nowadays, and you may have to gather differently. However, today is certainly a reminder that we are not through this yet. And as we look at some of the guidance for phase two, an outbreak like this just really solidifies that we kind of have to get our ducks in a row before we think about moving forward. Just to give you an idea, one of the requirements for phase two is basically knowing where people are getting the virus from, and being able to say that at least, or 30% or under of our cases are community spread, which means we don't know where we got them from. With our five new cases, or six new cases in the last week, we have about 50% community acquired. So we know where 50% got COVID-19 from, and about 50% were attached to an outbreak. So that's one of the metrics we're going to be looking at moving forward. Another one of the metrics is making sure that we're able to maintain social distancing even when we have larger gatherings. So if you're looking at, you know, 25 people in a gathering, you need 900 square feet minimum for that to happen. So just kind of thinking, keeping those things in mind as we move forward and kind of adjusting to the new normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Rebecca, is there anything you'd like to add to that update?
Well, I would, actually. I think it's, Nicole brings up some really good points, and I think part of, a little bit of our frustration in public health these days is that people are very excited, I guess would be the word, or anticipating moving us into phase two. And as Nicole just said, we don't really meet the criteria yet, even though we're still trying to figure out how the state measures that criteria, and how the timelines are going to go with that criteria. We don't have all those details yet. But I think the important thing, since this is a public meeting, that I want to convey to everybody in the community is that, just like our Keep Lincoln County Open campaign says, it's going to take all of us working together to make this happen. And we need for people to be wearing face coverings. And I thought this might be a good opportunity to explain the difference between the term "face covering" and "mask." So, they decided to use "face covering" now, which really means that it's not a mask, in that masks are completely, we want to use that term when we're referring to medical-grade masks. So those are the N95s that we have a shortage of still in this country, that we want to reserve for people that are working in the health field, and especially those that are working with people who are sick with COVID-19. Face coverings means that it's not medical-grade. So those are cloth, or paper, or disposable face coverings that cover the nose and the mouth. So that's kind of the difference between those two. And what we're asking the public to do, and for employers and employees to do, is to wear face coverings. So that means you can wear those paper ones, or you can wear cloth ones. But we need you to do that, and we're going to put out some more information so people understand how it works, because remember, this COVID-19 is a droplet spread. So that means it goes, it can get spread by talking, by yelling, by singing, by coughing, and by sneezing. And of course, the sneezing will emit the most virus, and the talking or the whispering the least. But at any rate, it is emitting COVID-19 viruses, and many people don't even know that, I think it's now 44% of people don't even know that they have COVID-19. So we all, we should all be thinking that we potentially could be emitting COVID-19 viruses out into the public, and to our neighbors, and to the gas station attendant, and to people that are making food for us. So we want to make sure that we're keeping our faces covered to protect others. And I just think it's a good, it's good to look around and see that people have masks on, because they, that means that they want to protect all of us. So I think that's really important, and we need to, and we need to make sure that if we're requiring those face coverings in, like, our jobs or whatever, that those are made available to people. So, we do have a whole bunch of face masks coming in that we are going to be making, did I say "face coverings"? I meant "face coverings," if I didn't. They're face coverings. We have a whole bunch coming into the county, and we're going to be trying to get those out as best we can, so that nobody has an excuse why they're not wearing a mask, that everybody will be wearing a mask. So I think this is key. And also, the six-foot distancing. And thank you, Nicole, or for whoever did that math. I think that's really critical, that we know how much space we need to allow six-foot distancing. And it's not just to your right or to your left, but it's all the way around you. So I think that's an important message to get out, too. And so, that's really how we're going to contain this thing. And when you have, we've had very low cases up to this point, and now when we have five new cases in one day, we know this is coming from the Memorial Day weekend, where people were opening up a little bit more, having gatherings more, people from out of the county were coming, that were, this is only our first week after Memorial Day weekend, so we got another week of this. And I can, I can just pretty much guarantee that we're going to see continued increase in cases in our county. And we've been doing so well, you know, we don't have that many, haven't had that many cases up till now, and we've all been isolating, and that's really been great. It's really helped our community a lot. But now that there are more cases, and people are out more, and gathering sizes are getting larger, that's going to put us all at greater risk. So just remember that when we go out into the world, we need to be wearing our face coverings, and we need to be maintaining our six-foot distancing, and of course, continuing to wash our hands vigilantly. So that's mostly what I wanted to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. I'll see if our other commissioners have questions. I would just ask that you or Rebecca, or hopefully both of you, can stay on the line as we get down into discussion, as we discuss our phase-two application process and possible face coverings into Lincoln County facilities. I think it'd be nice to have both of you on the phone in case there are questions or discussion points that you can help with as we go through those conversations here in a little bit. Commissioner Hall, questions or comments from Rebecca or Nicole from you?
Yes, thank you. Rebecca, you said 44% of the people who have COVID-19 don't know it. I'm assuming, are they, is, are those all asymptomatic folks, or possibly folks who think they have the flu, or, you know, who came up with that number?
Um, let's see, where did I get that number? That's a good question. I think, and that number keeps changing, by the way. So that's the latest one I had. But it does refer to the asymptomatics, not so much those that are in denial.
Okay, so primarily. The other question, and I know this is calling for a value judgment, and if you'd rather not, I, you know, I will understand that. But since the news got out there several hours ago on social media that we've had five new cases in one day, I mean, the reactions have been anywhere from, "Oh my gosh, the sky is falling, we shouldn't be opening up the way we are," versus, "Hey, nobody's hospitalized, it's not a big deal, this is something that we knew would be inevitable," has people started, you know, as you said, started to circulate more businesses reopening, just more circulation of people. How would you contextualize it, I guess? And I know that's a very open-ended and tough question.
That is an open-ended and tough question. I think that, you know, this conversation will be part of your phase-two conversation, I think. But I do think these five cases are a little bit of a wake-up call for us. And I have always said that we're probably about 30 days or so behind the valley, and the coast has been in a little bit of a bubble, and I think that bubble is breaking, for sure. And like I said earlier, I do anticipate more cases this week. So I think it could be a bit of a shocker for the community. But it is good that we haven't had to hospitalized anybody yet. Hopefully, all of these cases will be minor. And I would say that caution is back on our plates, for sure. I think people were sick and tired of being cooped up, and so when we went into phase one, everybody flung the doors open and, you know, hopped out. So, not that I think we need to hop back in, but like I said earlier, I think if we're going to be hopping out, we need to be taking the precautions that are going to keep everybody safe. So I think we can do this. I'm heartened by the fact that we have stayed the course pretty much up to this point. But I do think people need to think differently now that we have hopped out, that we need to be careful, we need to be vigilant, or we're going to have a spike, and we're not going to be able to keep up, and a lot of people are going to be sick. So, and we want to keep it away from our vulnerable populations, who are the ones that are going to end up in the hospital. So I think it's, in my viewpoint, somewhere in the middle on the extremes, like, oh, well, whatever, we knew this was going to happen, and the sky is falling. I like to stay somewhere in the middle there, and just say, yeah, we are out now, we're out and about, and we need to take precautions at the same time. And I think we can do that if we all dig in and do it together.
Commissioner Hunt, questions or comments from you?
Well, I'll follow up on Commissioner Hall's question. Rebecca, you said 44% of the population don't realize they have the virus. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you took the county population, that means over 20,000 people in our county don't realize they have the virus?
Um, yeah, that would be the number, right, if they were all infected. And when we now have, yeah, we're more than 30% in the, that's out in the community. That means we can't really identify where it's coming from. So, given that, yes.
If you figure county population roughly 50,000, 10% would be 5,000. And if you're talking 40%, 4 times 5 is 20, 20,000 people. So, to me, that's a shocking number, and something we need to keep in mind. The other thing, talking about the 900 square feet, to put that in a little more of a visual, that's, you know, 30 feet by 30 feet are 10 yards by 10 yards. So, you know, it's not a room that's 10 feet by 10 feet by any means. So, that's a sobering report.
Yeah, it's, it could be the size of many houses, you know, a small house, 900 square feet. So, yes, very sobering.
Rebecca, I have a kind of a follow-up question as the discussion has gone on here. And I know we, you know, you can't give out information specific to the event where we've had these positive cases, but just kind of in general, I guess. When you have a source of an outbreak like that, like a gathering or something of that nature, where you have a positive case come out of that, is everybody that was at that event, I know they'll be contacted by contact tracers, but are they automatically tested, or do they just kind of self-isolate at home and wait for symptoms until they're tested? Nicole, you want to take that one?
Yeah, since they are part of an outbreak, it is recommended that they all get tested. Obviously, we can't make people get tested, but it is a recommendation, and we can assist them with getting in with their provider if needed. The majority, though, we are just waiting on their test results right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. That answers my question.
Chair Jacobson, could I ask a follow-up? So, going back to your response, Nicole, so the people that are, have had contact with the identified case, they can't be required to the test, but if they have, or are willing to take a test, they'd still have to be referred to the provider, and the provider would still have to prescribe a test. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. They would still have to quarantine. So they would have to quarantine for those 14 days regardless of if they wanted to get a test or not. I think most people are interested in getting tested if they're involved in an outbreak like this, as was with this case. So they would just need to contact their provider and let them know that they were, that they were close contact of someone with COVID-19, and that triggers right there for them to get in and get tested right away. If they didn't have a provider, we could either work with them with Samaritan or our federally qualified health center to get them in right away.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nicole and Rebecca. And like I said, if you guys would be able to stay on for our discussion here in a few minutes, I think that would be helpful.
We'll be here.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to other reports, we have an Incident Management Team update presented by Rachel Maddox Hughes. I don't think Wiley was able to join us today, so it's just Rachel providing that update.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you.
Okay, great. A couple of quick updates. You probably have already heard, but we did get $120,000 in match funding, funding from the E-Board and Business Oregon. In addition, last week, I submitted a preapproval application for another, another $150,000 from Business Oregon from a different pot. We have met the preapproval requirements, and we are moving into a full application on that. This week, there's a focus on the Economic Development Administration dollars. There's about $130 million, so half of the original that we thought, because half was given over in non-competitive grants to economic development districts. But I just got notice from Business Oregon that EDA is kind of requesting a full state application, so not asking individual municipalities to apply on their own. So we're in a process of gathering information right now around what projects would potentially be qualified for this funding. Wiley and I are meeting with the coastal mayors on Wednesday. I'm meeting with Wayne and Katie on Thursday, and Commissioner Hunt. It'd probably be a good idea for us to set up a meeting as well, to talk through your priorities around this. That's really the focus for this week. And our broadband meeting is on Wednesday. It's a busy week.
I know we have a public hearing scheduled for later this week on a potential project, and I know that kind of news release has gone out. But I guess for people listening to this right now, can you kind of provide like a little infomercial, for lack of a better word, of kind of a preview of what that's about, and, you know, the type of comments or feedbacks we might kind of be looking for? I think that would be helpful for people to know how they could engage.
Absolutely. So this is part of the Community Development Block Grant process. They always want us to open it up for public comment. We are applying for, this is part of the pre-application that I mentioned, it's just a minute or two ago. We are applying for $150,000, which would be managed by our partner, Community Lending Works, and this will be given out to small businesses to retain jobs, to create or retain jobs over the next six months. And then there's also a separate $50,000 pot of funding that's for public service, which is really vague, but can be used for training, purchasing PPE, et cetera. And so, we're looking for any comments from the public in opposition or support of this project with Business Oregon.
Great, thank you. I think that would kind of help people, you know, understand the type of feedback we're looking for. So thank you. Commissioner Hall, questions or feedback?
Nothing at this time. Appreciate the comment.
No, I have no comments. I appreciate the good work by Rachel and the group. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I think I saw Chris Chandler pop in. Yep, I see her there. Chris, is there anything you wanted to add under this update?
Um, somewhat premature, but I will go back to the face shields. They are selling fairly well, except for Depot Bay and Waldport Chambers. They're not going as quickly. Lincoln City had a significant amount of interest, so those are going. And I should be picking up the rest of them on Friday, and that will complete that particular phase of the project. We're having a, hopefully, meeting on Wednesday to talk about linking local residents to local food sources, and how that might occur. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Sorry for putting you on the spot there, but I appreciate the update. Okay, under Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Hall, do you have a report to provide?
No.
Commissioner Hunt?
I'll just report. I'll just report that we interviewed a third candidate for the maritime coordinator position, which is part of the ongoing efforts to provide educational and job training programs for individuals so that they can have well-paying jobs in the maritime industry in our state.
Great news. I would just add that I am likely going to be appointed to the Division of Land Conservation Development. Here coming up in a couple of weeks is when that hearing is, the Senate hearing. And so I'll likely be appointed after that time. Okay, moving on under to discussion information of Phase Two application process. Wayne, would you like to kick us off on that discussion? Wayne, you're on mute.
I'm trying to drive yours, I'm doing this at the same time, so I had to move things around. Sorry about that. Wayne Belmont County Council, yeah, let me describe this a little bit. So late last Thursday, we received a letter from the governor that explained the process for entering into Phase Two. We've been anticipating getting something. Wasn't sure whether this would be automatic, whether it would require additional criteria, whether it would require an application. And now we know a little bit more about what that process entails. And what happened here is that, in order to enter Phase Two, the process entails writing a letter to OHA and the governor that talks about, we have to basically re-attest some of the things we did in the original application we made to get into Phase One, such that county first responders have sufficient PPE, that we had asserted that we would have a number of trained contract, or contact tracers available in the county. We have to describe that a little bit more. And if there were any substantive changes in what we applied for in Phase One, that all has to be contained in the letter. It also requires us to spit, to request a specific date on which to enter into Phase Two. So that's the initial process that's entailed. The original requirements that were in Phase One, the four criteria, still have to be met. And just to recall what those are, the first one was percentage of emergency department visits of COVID-like illness is less than the historic average for flu. That's an OHA criteria. That was in the original Phase One, which we met. Over the previous fourteen days, the county has to show a stable or declining hospital admission. And if we're under five hospital, hospitalized cases, which the county has been, then we're not even required to meet that metric. The third was, of course, the adequate contact tracing system, as I previously discussed. And we do move, we do meet that requirement and we'll continue to meet that. And then the fourth requirement was that we have to maintain adequate isolation and quarantine facilities, a minimum testing regimen, sufficient healthcare capacity, and the PPE. So all those things have to be kind of re-examined and recertified. And we do meet those criteria. But there were three additional new criteria added into, enter into Phase Two. And those criteria include a timely follow-up. That a minimum of ninety-five percent of all new cases have to be contact traced within twenty-four hours of the discovery. And those are measured on fourteen and seven-day periods. And we do meet those requirements. We have met those requirements, those specific requirements. There also has to be no increase in incident cases or positivity. And there's some metrics there associated with the percentages over the past seven days. And those are both in new cases and in the percentage of positive cases out of the total testing. Apparently, we meet that particular requirement. The one that we do not meet, and OHA provided us with information on the day that we actually received the governor's guidance to enter into discussions about Phase Two, we also learned that we do not meet this requirement. And that's the one that, that Nicole was talking about, which is that a minimum of, the way they word it in this language is a minimum of seventy percent of the new COVID-19 cases must be traced to an existing positive case over seven and fourteen-day periods. And we do not meet that requirement. And that if you go to our website, you'll see that those particular criteria are outlined in OHA's determination. That is an OHA determination that we don't meet that criteria. We since followed up, trying to understand how that particular criteria is measured. Is it a point in time measurement? Is it a rolling period of time? Is it a, is that criteria something that, that has to be met before we can even apply? Or is it just one of the considerations that the state takes into account in terms of our ability to even make an application? We don't really have the answers to that yet. We hope to actually gain more information tomorrow. There's going to be a meeting with public health officials and OHA, and these questions are all being posed. I can tell you at this point, fourteen of Oregon's thirty-six counties have applied to move into Phase Two. From my very quick analysis of those counties, only one did I discover that actually didn't meet the criteria that still made an application. The rest of them already met all of the criteria. And these are mostly, as you can probably gather, they're mostly counties on the east side of the mountains and in the southern part of the state. They really haven't had, seen the incidences of COVID that other parts of the state have seen. So we continue to monitor this particular process, try to get our questions answered, and then be available to talk to you about, more about the process for applying for Phase Two. Obviously, there's a lot of other considerations you have to make. And I think your discussion with Rebecca Austin and Nicole Fields earlier in terms of what the trending is in Lincoln County recently will play into your decision on whether or not or when to apply for moving into Phase Two.
Thank, thank you, Wayne. Nicole or Rebecca, is there anything you wanted to add, just in terms of sort of the application process and the requirements around Phase Two?
This is Nicole. I think Wayne did a nice job of summarizing everything. I would just encourage us to kind of wait and see with this outbreak too. We did get a lot of people under monitoring right now that we're waiting on test results for, which could have an impact on entering Phase Two.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would say, I would say the same thing, Katie. I think more information is coming out. Like Wayne mentioned, I'm having a meeting with all the other local health authorities tomorrow with OHA, because many of us have similar questions about this application process. And I, I think since we so far don't meet the criteria, even though we don't totally understand what that means and how they're measuring it, I think more, more to come, for sure. If we're not in any big hurry, it would be good to just sort of slow it down here a little bit, I think.
Yeah, and I would just add that even if we were in a big hurry, I'm not saying we are, but even if we were, we were told in no uncertain terms by OHA last week that we do not meet that criteria, period. So while there is some questions, I have some questions that I know, I, I'm trying to get the answers to as well as yourself and Wayne. We know we currently do not meet the criteria. And even though we're kind of trying to understand time periods, we know that we're not able to get there at this point. I also, just to share my thoughts about Phase Two. You know, with our first active outbreak happening, with us waiting for additional information back from people that were at that event and their potential test results, as well as the fact that we don't qualify. We also had two additional cases today that were community spread. And I know we have to stay under that thirty percent, so I'm assuming that's going to further disqualify us. So I really feel like at this time, you know, Phase Two is not, is really not something that, you know, we need to discuss a whole lot. In terms of reopening, we simply just do not qualify. And we have our first active outbreak that we need to be managing and getting under control. So those are my thoughts. Commissioner Hall, questions or comments?
No questions, but I will say, Chair Jacobson, that my thoughts almost exactly mirror yours. Too many unanswered questions. And, you know, if five new cases in one day isn't a yellow caution flag, if not a, a red stop flag, I don't know what is. So, I mean, let's continue researching, let's continue the staff work. But definitely now is not the time for us to be even thinking about the application. And as has been said, we're not even eligible yet. So, no need to rush things.
And Commissioner Hunt?
I echo the same thing. I think I've been a proponent of going slow all along. I think we certainly have additional reason to go slow. Let's get more data. And when we have more data, have an understanding of the presence of the virus and the transmission of the virus within our residents and visitors. And then qualify, then I think it's time to have a discussion. But I continue to be a proponent of going slow and let's take it one step at a time.
Okay, so I think we're in agreement there. This is just a discussion thing, so we don't need a formal motion. So I'm just going to say, as Chair, let's, let's move or just continue to have a Phase Two application process discussion on next week's agenda. So let's, let's carry this agenda item onto there as well. Hopefully from, from, hopefully by next week, we'll have clarity from the state on some of these questions. We're all trying to kind of understand it in terms of process and that sort of thing. But additional, additionally, back to what Rebecca had said earlier, and that, you know, Memorial Day, people kind of started getting out and about. There might have even been more, you know, events or gatherings or whatever. And next week will be about two weeks away from Memorial Day, as Rebecca had said earlier. And so, you know, we might kind of see additional cases and things happen another week out from that time. So let's just move this discussion on the next week's agenda and hopefully have more information, both from the state, but also in terms of what's happening locally.
Katie, if I could interject there too, with the, the events, you know, this weekend is going to be graduation, even though they're taking great precautions to do that as safely as possible. We do suspect that some people will still want to have gatherings to celebrate their grads. And we have put out some tips on how to do that safely, how to minimize the number of people that you have at your event and all those kinds of things. So people need to be thinking about that, not having these big, you know, lots of different people coming and going and then going to another one and then to another one. You know, like pick one and be safe at that one. And so I think, because otherwise, we're going to be at our two-week from Memorial Day and then we're going to be another two weeks out for graduation. And it's just going to go like this for the summer, because then we'll be at the Fourth of July. So just to remind everybody, we are in the summer mode, but we're not really in the summer mode, because we're in the COVID summer mode.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that reminder. And I'm, I'm glad those materials are going out, because I think a lot of people are scared about tourists coming and being our community and potentially bringing spread. But I also think it's important that, you know, we, we can get spread in our own community from attending a barbecue or a graduation event or what have you. So I'm glad those are going out. All right, next on the discussion information, public face coverings and opening of public county facilities. And I actually do believe that we need an actual decision on this today. So I guess, I guess just to recap our discussion from last week. Kristin, maybe you want to kind of just give us a recap of county building openings and the discussion we had last week on mask wearing in county facilities? And then we'll do questions and then we'll make a decision.
Hi, Commissioner, this is Kristin Newell, Assistant County Council. So right now, where we stand for reopening is we're doing the telecommuting. We're encouraging rotating of schedules. Employees are recovered, are required to wear face coverings while they're at work. And we're just waiting for guidance from the board on the public.
You mean public face coverings, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, Wayne, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
Just in terms of the opening of the county facilities, a lot of that was tied into Phase Two. I think a lot of jurisdictions that we've talked to are really tying some of their reopening of their own facilities into Phase Two, movement into Phase Two. I can tell you, and I think from what Kristin and Jerry and Janet have told me, that the county was going through some facilities upgrades to try and address some of the social distancing things we need to do for employees, providing protective PPE for our employees, including face coverings, sanitizer, cleaning products, that kind of stuff, and putting in appropriate barriers as necessary if there are public-facing kinds of activities out there. And I think that most of that work in the county facilities has been completed. So from a facility standpoint, in terms of being prepared, we will be prepared when the decision is made to reopen for the public. And again, what we had talked about was tying this really to moving into Phase Two, which is part of your previous discussion.
Okay, I guess one other kind of staff report on this I might like to hear from before we turn around for questions is from Sheriff Landers specifically. And I apologize to the public who is watching this and didn't watch last week's, because this, this might be a little segmented. But we kind of had this discussion on mask wearing within county buildings, like the courthouse, last week, and there was kind of several things that we felt needed to be discussed more with staff, which I think had happened in this last week. So now, now we're going to be making decisions. But I wanted to check in with Sheriff Landers, because I think one of the issues that came up last week in our discussion was, since it's, you know, your staff providing security in the building, that's kind of the face or the person that is interacting with people as they come in and, and making sure that you guys potentially would, would have a plan or, or have some sort of process for dealing with people that said, you know, they had a medical issue and couldn't wear a mask or what have you. And there seemed to be kind of the need for some discussion there. So I guess I just wanted to check in and, and see where the sheriff's office might be in terms of, you know, mask wearing inside the public building, in terms of just kind of working with the public and working through issues that might be presented if that comes up.
Thank you, Commissioner, yes. So, you know, with the screener station being our employees and coming through and, and close contact, you know, we would, my, my position is I would still encourage that we have all the, everyone coming through be required to wear a face covering. I think we heard from Rebecca a little bit earlier about what that prevents. And I, I saw a graphic, I think that was Representative Gonberg sent down, about how well that they actually protect us. It was kind of a staged approach of, you know, with nothing all the way up to, if you just stay at home, that your, your chances of getting it is zero. And it really kind of hit home that, you know, we can, with staying six feet, if we both have face coverings, very low risk. But if we do have to get within that six feet, we really should have a face covering. And oftentimes, panning different material, we do go through that to where we are doing close quarters where we're actually within that six feet. And so if both parties have a face covering, I think it would be beneficial also for the consistency of, with the courts requiring it inside the courtrooms. It would also make it beneficial for us to, basically, everyone comes through, has to require it, not asking if you're going to court, well, you're going to need it once you get up there. But if you're going elsewhere, you're not. I also, and I confirmed with Council Belmont, that there's really, as far as enforcement, it's going to be, except in the courtrooms, where it would be a different enforcement. In the courtrooms, if somebody's not wearing it, refuses to wear it, and doesn't have a medical condition, the judge would order that person in contempt and we'd be actually arresting them for contempt and not for actually not wearing the, the face covering. But for the courthouse area, it would be county code. It's not an arrestable offense. And we would basically, the, the strongest form of enforcement that we could provide would be a citation. But, you know, just if it's required, over just strongly encouraged, it adds, you know, it adds a little bit more teeth into the matter and provides us with a lot better opportunity to, to do any kind of enforcement on it. And I think the citation would be absolute last resort. And I don't even see that happening. I think our, our members can be very encouraging to, to have someone wear it. And we're also very accommodating if there is a medical need. We, you know, we know what, what to ask, but not to ask. And we can provide alternatives at that point. And it would just provide a lot, it would strengthen our, our point on, on the matter. So we're prepared to go. So we're prepared to go either way, and we'll support whatever decision you have.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from Commissioner Hall?
I'm going to say, I'm with the sheriff on this one. I really think we need to lead by example. I think for the sake, not only of our employees, but the many, many people who come into this building to do business with the courts, the clerk, the treasurer, you know, that I'm, I'm just, let's, the two of you figure out a good way to talk me out of it. I'm in favor of us doing a masking requirement in county facilities.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt.
Well, I guess I'd like to clarify, are we talking about requiring face coverings in the courthouse, or are we talking about requiring face coverings in all county facilities once they open?
Good question, and I think we are talking about two things. We're talking about face coverings. They will try to change for massive face coverings inside county public facilities. So this wouldn't necessarily just be the courthouse, but things like the planning department, which isn't in the courthouse, but is still a county public facility. And then I think the second issue we're talking about, which I'll guide us there in a minute, is just reopening of those county facilities. I think we're having two different pieces, but if we could stay on the face coverings for now, and then we'll talk about public or county facilities reopening.
Well, it complicated my thought process. I'm certainly supportive of requiring face coverings in the courthouse. I think with the security point, you've got an effective way to monitor it and manage the process. I'd be interested in having more conversation of requiring it in other county facilities, depending on their particular situation, location, the people that might be visiting those facilities. And if we're talking about requiring face coverings in public facilities until we go to Phase Two, we've got time to consider that. But I support the requiring face coverings in the courthouse, for sure.
Okay. And I would say that I also agree on requiring face coverings, I would say, beyond just the courthouse, but also in our other public facilities when those reopen, when we would have the public coming into those facilities again. So in terms of process here, Wayne, I'm assuming you need a motion?
It would be great. I think I've got a consensus of where you want to go. What I would actually recommend we do is let's prepare in order, and we could actually put on this coming Wednesday's agenda. I think we need to do that first because you actually have members of the public coming in with more frequency right now into the courthouse. And let's just at least address the courthouse and take care of that on Wednesday, and we'll do an order.
Okay, sounds good.
Wayne cut out. I couldn't, I'm not sure what he's recommending for Wednesday. I just didn't hear it.
He's going to put an actual order together for us to potentially adopt on Wednesday?
That's correct.
For all, for all county facilities?
For the courthouse.
Or just the courthouse? You're cutting out. I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to hear.
Sorry, for the courthouse.
Okay.
Um, all right. Moving on here, opening of public county facilities. I would just suggest that, and maybe we just kind of need consensus on this and not a formal order at the same, or maybe we do, maybe that's a Wayne question, but I guess how I'm feeling, I'm feeling like we continue to do what we have been doing, which is public service as much as possible remotely, by phone, email, go to meeting, that sort of thing, and then where it's not possible, by appointment. Obviously, with courts presuming a more fuller in-person docket, there is more people in the courthouse right now than in terms of county-based services. I just think we should continue doing what we have been doing, and that we have a discussion about reopening county facilities as we are in Phase Two. And as we talked about Phase Two, it's really difficult to say when that might be, but I think we continue with the process of being closed at the time being, and that that would be a kind of Phase Two type opening. That's how I'm feeling.
I agree.
Commissioner Hall?
Oh, I'm sorry, I agree.
Okay. Wayne, do you need something formalized for that?
No, because we're continuing the status quo. That's all the things you described, what we're doing now. We'll just continue that.
Great, okay. And I think as we just kind of keep rolling this discussion along through the different weeks, as it looks like, as we get clarity on Phase Two requirements a little bit, and as it looks like we would actually meet those requirements, and when we prepare to make an application, then I think we can kind of dive into this discussion on opening public buildings kind of in detail. Okay, is there any other business to discuss from commissioners? Commissioner Hall, anything?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm not quite sure how to approach this. Just I have heard through various channels from a lot of constituents, and I wouldn't be surprised if you and Commissioner Hunt have, too, about whether we were going to have a discussion and potentially take any action for a more generalized requirement for use of face coverings in public. You know, I know a few governors have issued executive orders ranging anywhere from a pretty clear requirement to one making it optional, but apparently removing business from liability if they exclude people who don't have their faces covered. You know, there's, you know, I'm not telling you anything when I say there's still a tremendous amount of angst out there, and I wonder if we, you know, want to have the conversation. I think it makes more sense for it to happen at the state level than at the local level, but, you know, at least wanted to put that out there and see if it's something we want to consider now or in the future.
Wayne, I have a question for you on this matter. Let's just say that we did that. I mean, for the effort of conversation, let's just assume that we, the three of us, voted to do that. Would that, would that requirement then only matter in the unincorporated parts of the county? Or would that, would we actually have control of that countywide? And the reason I'm asking is if we would only have control in the unincorporated parts, and I think the actual discussion of this would again need to be something that we would do in conjunction with all of our cities, like we've done with lodging in the past, so that there would be some consistency, as I think having, you know, City A having a mask wearing requirement, and then City B not, and then, I mean, I think that would be very confusing, both for citizens but also for people coming in. So I guess I'm just curious, from a kind of jurisdictional place here, who has authority?
Well, this is, because this is a public health issue, it could be, and I'm not going to say with any definitive answer, because I'd have to look into this a lot more before I tell you specifically, but it could be that you could adopt something that would apply within the cities. But let me maybe make the conversation a little bit easier in this sense. Lincoln City on Friday had an extensive discussion in a special meeting about this very issue, and actually had some suggestions that they look at doing just a citywide ordinance that actually would require face coverings within the city and public areas. They went back and forth about the merits of doing it, the ability to do so, and talked a lot about enforceability if they did it. What they finally came down to is that they feel it would be much more effective if they took some of the things that are being done like, right now, like keep Lincoln County open, which has a lot of education and information, and got that out and did an education process and spent their time and efforts doing that, working with businesses in the community, with civic groups, with others, including things as far as potentially even purchasing some signs at the entrance to the city that say, you know, this is what we're asking you to do to be a good neighbor when you come to Lincoln County. And they're going that direction. That's what they finally decided to do, rather than make this a regulatory item that they, that's really practically impossible to enforce. And I think they talked a lot about that enforcement side of things, and I think that's the debate that's going on across the nation, too, is even if you have the authority to do something, is it really the effective way to get done what you want to get done?
Okay. Commissioner Hunt, questions or anything else you wanted to discuss?
I guess, Wayne, as you, I guess, well, I'm not sure if we're still asking staff to come back with a determination, whether it would be countywide or not. If I remember the conversation we had a week ago, there was not uniformity among the advice that was provided to the board as to whether or not it was legal. And I think if I were to summarize the comments, there was a feeling that, well, nobody really knew that there'd have to probably be, you know, some lawsuits and court cases that might make the final determination. So my concern is, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Wayne.
I think we're all falling into this trap of trying to say this is a legal issue, and it's not, in the sense that, you know, a number of states have instituted these kinds of requirements statewide, and in every one of those circumstances have been challenged in the courts. But it's not a question whether it's legal to do this or not legal, and I think we're getting too caught up in that argument. You want me to give you a yes or no, up or down, legal up? It's much more a policy, public health issue. How do you best achieve what you want to achieve, you know, doing, don't keep framing it as a legal issue. And I think that's, we're falling too much in that trap.
All right, well, then, I'll go back to what I was trying to get to, because I think since there is this confusion, to me, that, you know, in an ideal world, you'd pass the ordinance and everybody'd obey, and we'd all be happy. Then in an ideal world, people would be complying with the, you know, nonessential travel that's still in place by the governor's order, and I guess even more ideally, people would simply stay home. So to me, the question boils down to the practicality of implementing or passing an ordinance or an order, and the resources that the county has to enforce it or deal with the questions that will be raised, as Wayne alluded to. So, you know, again, in an ideal world, sure, but I'm afraid that with lack of enforceability and the practicality of passing the resolution would be far more detrimental to our ability to enforce it and utilize resources than trying to promote it on a marketing campaign, and, you know, let's all be kind with others, and let's try to keep everybody healthy.
I guess I'm going to suggest, and maybe we can just kind of get a consensus here, I'd suggest that we do kind of direct staff to kind of get some clarity, and I appreciate your comment, Wayne, about it's not a legal issue. I think I've been falling into that trap, too, but I think it would be helpful to understand where we would have jurisdictional authority, because, you know, this is, again, one of those things where the conversation might be best with cities, if we wouldn't have authority over the whole county. So maybe we can direct you or Jerry or Kristin to look into that a little bit more, and as well as the Sheriff Landers to kind of think about the enforcement piece, which I think is a very real issue, and maybe put this on the agenda for next week, and, you know, have it noticed on our agenda and actually have that discussion then. And I will go look at the recording for the city of Lincoln City and kind of understand what they discussed and decided on as well. Does that sound like an okay plan?
That sounds fine to me, Madam Chair. And by the way, I did listen to the Lincoln City meeting this morning. It was a very interesting discussion, and, yeah, one of the themes, I think, that came out of that discussion, out of our discussion today, just as much cooperation, consistent messaging. I mean, we've done, I think, pretty well on that score over the last couple of months, and hopefully we can continue that.
Okay. Commissioner Hunt, is that a process?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Next week, then.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, I was kind of filling down the list and making sure no one else had anything else to say, and then we got in the face covering discussion. So Commissioner Hunt, you get the last word today. Is there anything else you wanted to discuss that we have not already?
Not on my list, thank you.
Okay. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Upcoming scheduled meetings of the Board of Commissioners, Wednesday, June 3, 2020, at 3:00 PM, again remotely, the public hearing about our community development block grants. And then Monday, June 8, 9:00 AM, our office meeting and board briefing. And then Monday, June 8, again, at 3:00 PM, another Board of Commissioners meeting, again, those will be remotely. All right, thank you, everybody, we are adjourned.
Thank you.